Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Osseo Area Independent School District 279 to order at 6:04 PM on Tuesday. With that, I would like to do a roll call, starting with Director Henke.
Director Dean Henke.
Director Stephanie Fortner.
Director Jim Brigette.
Mike Ostafi.
Heather Douglas.
Director Jessica Craig.
Thank you, and I would like to start off with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any other additions to the agenda tonight? No, hearing none. I will make a motion to accept the agenda as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Henke. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes and we will accept the agenda as listed. Next on the agenda is the audience opportunity to address the school board. We have no cards, so we will move on to the next one. That is Agenda Item Number Five. And we will start with that, which is superintendent report.
All right. Thank you, Chair Ostafi. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of Pride celebrates students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishments of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride.
In the category of achieving dreams, Weaver Lake Elementary, a science, math, and technology school, has been named a nationally certified magnet school by Magnet Schools of America. Weaver Lake is among 21 schools in 12 states to receive this honor this year. To become nationally certified, schools had to complete an intensive evaluation process and provide specific examples of how they are promoting diversity, closing the achievement gap, encouraging community involvement, and more. Weaver Lake will be recognized at Magnet Schools of America's Annual Conference next April. After a rigorous two-year process, three graduates from Park Center Senior High's class of 2018 earned their international backglowierate diplomas this summer. In order to earn their diplomas, Zaini Abdo, Deja Hoben, and Henry Nguyen were each required to complete challenging coursework, take exams in six different areas, participate in community service learning projects, and write a 4,000-word essay.
Earlier this summer, Maple Grove Senior High's Kevin Jacobson placed eighth at the National Speech and Debate Tournament in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Jacobson competed in the Congressional Debate category. He is the first Maple Grove student to ever qualify for the finals at the national competition. Tasha Fay and Osseo Senior High alumna competed in gymnastics at the Special Olympics USA Games in Seattle, Washington this summer. During the course of the competition, Fay earned gold medals on the vault and uneven bars and silver medals on the balance beam, floor exercise, and in the all-around.
Meredith Hawkinson, a 2018 graduate of Maple Grove Senior High, was named the High School Girls Player of the Year by United Soccer Coaches. Hawkinson was selected for this honor from a group of more than 50 female student athletes who earned High School Scholar All-American Awards. She is now a member of the women's soccer team at the University of Michigan.
In the category of contributing to community, in early August, First Student held its second annual Stuff the Bus event at Park Center Senior High. During this event, community members were encouraged to donate school supplies to help students in need in our district. When the event concluded, enough supplies were donated to fill 150 bags for students.
In the category of lifelong learning, thanks to a grant from the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry, Park Center Senior High students will have opportunities to prepare for future careers through paid internships with local businesses. The district will share the $95,000 grant with five other partners to form one of five youth skills training pilot programs in the state. Through this program, students who are enrolled in designated classes at Park Center can apply for information-technology-related internships with local businesses.
Our next category is mission-driven employees. Educational support professionals from Osseo Area Schools donated nearly 1,300 books to Freedom Schools participants this summer. Freedom Schools provides students with reading enrichment to help curb summer learning loss and close achievement gaps. The ESPs aim to collect at least 300 books, enough for each student to take one home, but they far surpass that goal, and as a result, each student was given three books instead.
Pollin, an organization that strives to build community and create change through storytelling, honored Ramona Kito Stately in its 50-over-50 recognition for 2018. Stately, one of district's American, Indian, Culture and Language specialists, was honored as a community leader for the support she provides to students, including ensuring that all graduate from high school.
Osseo Area Schools received the Employer of the Year Award from Brooklink on August 17th. Brooklink is a local organization that partners with businesses to coordinate internships for youth in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, providing them with experience and support to help them develop pathways to college and career. This summer, 12 interns worked with Osseo Area Schools in Human Resources, I2T2, Custodial, Freedom Schools, KidStop, and Business Office roles.
And our new teacher workshop took place last week, beginning with a welcome breakfast sponsored by North Hennepin Chamber of Commerce. More than 200 new teachers from Osseo Area Schools and from Brooklyn Center Schools enjoyed a hearty breakfast at the Marriott in Brooklyn Park, compliments of the Chamber of Commerce. They received a welcome from each district superintendent and an inspirational presentation by the 2018 Minnesota Teacher of the Year, Kelly Holstein. Osseo teachers spent the rest of the day learning about the district's strategic plan and employment nuts and bolts and participating in an orientation with Education Minnesota Osseo. The remaining three days were filled with job-specific training and classroom time. Our continuing licensed staff returned yesterday, and all staff are busy preparing for the first day of school. Our licensed staff at sites are engaging in professional development, getting their classrooms ready for the new year, and preparing for open houses. Last month, I talked about the August 11th fun run. More than 375 participants and 200 community members gathered for the District 279 Foundation's Eighth Annual Reading is Fun 5K Run Walk at Elm Creek Park Reserve. The foundation partners with KidStop, our school district's school-age childcare program, to coordinate with this annual opportunity to advocate that reading is fun. Partners from Lifetime Fitness and several mascots were on hand to help warm up the runners, many of whom trained for the race during the summer at KidStop. You can visit the District 279 Foundation's Facebook page to see photos from the event. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which are school board reports, the August 21st work session. Director Brigette.
Mr. Chair. The topic of the school board work session on August 21st was an update on the district's Digital Learning for All strategic priority. At the work session, board members learned about the implementation of the Digital Learning for All plan at the high school, how Chromebooks were used at this summer's high school Freedom School program, and the next steps for the plan. The plan focuses on helping students experience learning that is personalized through strengthening teaching and learning practices that support student success in the digital age.
Thank you. Are there any others? All right. Thank you very much, Director Brigette. Next item is the gift to the district from the Osseo Maple Grove Hockey Association and Osseo Park Center and Osseo Senior High Parent Booster Groups in the amount of $846,000. So, first of all, thank you. This is going to be a fun thing that I want to talk about tonight. We have several guests with us tonight from OMGHA, Rob Borsch, Nicole Kuesterman, Brian Grant, Chuck Sawicki, and with Premier Bank, who's helping making this happen, Tom Kern. So I'd like to thank them personally for the gift and working with us to move forward and to improve the ranks in Osseo and to make that something that's going to be a heck of an asset for this district and for our kids and for our community for many more years to come. I know Omega paid for the initial ranks back in the '70s and the '90s, and this is a continuation of that partnership. So I'd like to thank you for that. And Patricia, you may have some more information on that. We're going to vote on accepting the agreement later, but...
I just would also like to thank, it's been fun to work with you throughout the spring and the summer and finish up this project. We just got to have a tour as cabinet members at the ongoing work, and it's really looking good, and I'm looking forward to having that improvement for our kids. Thank you. You can either, if you wanted to say something, Rob, or...
So, yeah, thank you. When I was five years old, I went to my first hockey game at Osseo Arena. My dad took me to watch the Osseo High School team. Back then, that was the only rink, you know, and we've come a long way since then. We're now a membership of almost 1,200 players, which makes us the second-largest in the state, which also happens to make us the second-largest in the United States. We now have four ranks, and that's not enough. And so when the district approached us, and, you know, obviously, Osseo is, you know, it's a worn rink, but we have a lot of pride in it, and it's got the best ice in the state. We always say that, and everybody knows that, right, guys? So, anyway, we're happy to partner with the school district, make a contribution. Thanks, Mr. Kern, for helping us finance this, and thanks to Patricia and Dale Carlstrom for their partnership and work on this. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. If we could do one of these every month, I'd be happy. So, next on the agenda is a presentation on summer learning. We'll start that off with Brian Severson Hall.
All right. Chair Ostafi, school board members, Dr. Reese Craft. On behalf of myself and my co-presenters, Carrie Cave, Revill Strum, Robin Gonzalez, Andy Boudot, and Jill Laney, we want to thank you for this opportunity to talk about summer learning. I know oftentimes we hear about the state fair as the official end of summer, but I feel like this presentation to the school board is my official end of summer. So, we're always thrilled to get to talk about, as you know, the school district does not shut down in the summer, and we offer many programs, and we want to highlight a number of them tonight. So the outcome of tonight's presentation is board members will be provided with information regarding summer learning experiences for students and staff, members in Osseo Area Schools, and Carrie Cave is going to kick off our section for the opportunities that students had.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to apologize right now. Hopefully, you understand me. I am on vacation this week, and that means I'm de-stressing, so I always get sick, so... All right. So first thing, I'm going to share some of the highlights that we've done for our pre-K students this summer. Early childhood family education classes, both parents and children, had 156 individuals participate in summer classes, which is huge for that program. It's kind of new. It just started last year for that early age, so it's amazing to see that program continue to grow. I love that 50% of participants are new to the program as well, so it never participated in any of our early learning opportunities, so that's a great first exposure into our district, which is great. Screening continued over the summer months, with 215 students being screened this summer, and then they had an open house where 122 people attended, and again, many of them were brand-new to the program as well. So just learning about the different opportunities that'll be happening here in the fall. Camp Rocks Academic Adventures continues to be a strong program within our district as well. So Camp Rocks is majorly funded through targeted services funding, right? So revenue that we generate on the students being with us in the program during the summer. We had three Camp Rock sites this summer with 822 students enrolled, and that's a 6.5% increase from last summer. So it was fun to continue to just watch those programs bloom and blossom. That's kids that have completed kindergarten, all the way kids going up into fifth grade that can participate in that program during the summer. And we continue to have great staff and partnerships along with that. One of the great ones that started this summer that was new is we had Sheridan Story participating, and they were providing backpacks full of food for families that were interested in having them be brought home on the weekend. So they were able to take big old bags of food home that families and kids could have from Sheridan Story for free, for them to have at home during the summer months as well. So Camp Rocks tends to target some of our learners with some higher needs as well, so it was a great partnership. And then we also had InSports again. Last year, I had shared with you another organization that came in for free and kind of gives kids an opportunity to try multiple different sports. They blast music out in the field, and the kids are running around and playing, and they continue to participate with us and visited all three sites for a day, kind of like a giant outdoor field day, field trip for the kids with loud music, getting to try new stuff. And then they also talked to the kids about healthy eating and provide some kind of curriculum around that for the staff to you as well. Camp Rocks mini-camps are the classes that happen at Cedar Island during the summer. So just some highlights from some of those programs. We also tried this year again to host some Camp Rocks mini-camps classes at our KidStop site, so those students could participate, as well as community members could sign up for those sites as well. But we had 241 students taking enrichment camp at our KidStop site, which is great. So that was only three different weeks during the summer that one or two classes were happening, so those classes were all full and ran. We had 252 students participate in the District 279 track program. So that was late spring, early summer, where students and families got to meet over at Osseo Senior High's track. And speaking personally as a mom who had a kiddo in the program who absolutely loved it, it was great. They got to sample all of the different sporting events, and then they did a big, huge track meet at the end, so it was great to kind of watch the kids do that. And then we had 650 students, and that was when I made this presentation, so that was probably about two and a half, three weeks ago, that have done an enrichment camp this summer at Cedar Island. So that number has increased since we pulled those numbers. KidStop and Cosmic Club continue to grow, so this summer KidStop had 1,435 students enrolled, so that's a 10.5% increase from last summer. We added more site consistency for families, so really working to make sure field trips are the same. So if I go to Basswood on Monday and maybe Fernbrook on Tuesday, I'm getting a similar experience as well. So really wanting to balance that out for families. And another cool thing they did this summer is we wanted to give back locally, so they did different drives for SEEP and CROSS instead of other organizations. So something that's right in our borders that affects those that we serve. Middle-level programs continue to be strong as well during the summer. We have multiple programs that are funded through different ways. So we have a couple of programs that we use our 21st Century funding for. We also do some targeted programs for middle-level students. SPOT is more like our KidStop program for our middle-level students' role, so that's tuition-based. But we had 253 middle-school students enrolled in SPOT this summer, so they do field trips two or three times a week. They were at Maple Grove Middle School this summer. I got to be judge on Cupcake Wars. That was a pretty amazing experience, other than I think I was on a sugar high for a couple hours afterwards, because you had to taste every single cupcake that came across the threshold. And we continue just to see growth, especially in that area, for middle-level students finding stuff for them to do during the summer months as well. And then I always like to plug ABE. We kind of, that kind of ends when school is out as well. So ABE hosted graduation on June 13th with 42 graduates, which is amazing for our program. And just some other things in here, they're working on some new partnerships for workforce development, as well as working with Hennepin County Workforce Center to learn some computer skills for students as well. So other great stuff that continues to happen in our district over the summer months.
And I'm going to highlight a project that we started this year. We piloted through a grant through Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth, and you heard Brooklink mentioned in Points of Pride, but this was a social-emotional learning project, and the question that we were trying to answer through this project was what role can youth play in measuring social-emotional learning in our out-of-school-time programs? Because we tout those as places for students to make friendships, gain confidence, learn some interpersonal skills. And so what we tried to do with this project is infuse some social-emotional learning opportunities within the project. So the idea was, the project was designed by and led by middle-school students, not by adults, right? So part of social-emotional learning is learning how to do that, right, and have the confidence to do that. So we worked with our SPOT middle-school students to lead the project. Myself and Melissa Henderson trained SPOT students on conducting focus groups and surveys. And then we went over to Fernbrook, KidStop. We were going to do it at all the sites, and then we thought we were being a little over ambitious on the first year. That became evident, so that's a social skill, right, learning when you're in over your head? So it was awesome, though. So the SPOT students designed all the questions for the survey. They designed all the questions for the focus groups. And then KidStop students came in in groups of 12, and our middle-school students conducted focus groups with them, and then they switched over to a survey section, and they met with other middle-school students who conducted survey questions with them to get ideas. And just for example, some of the questions would be like, are there adults who listen to you in this program? Yes, no, sometimes, right? Things like that. Do you have the opportunity to impact programming at this site, right? Yes, no, sometimes. That's just an example of it. So our middle-school students conducted these surveys and focus groups in the morning. It was super fun to see the KidStop students look a little bit surprised that the adults were standing in the corner and middle-school students were leading it, right? Why isn't there an adult talking? Well, we're trying to teach social-emotional learning, right? So this was a project that we did this year. We're compiling some of the results of that, and we believe our initial thinking is going to be, we will continue to do this, but we're hoping next year, if we're at the SPOT, to offer a summer-long leadership program for middle-school students, so we can expand on some of these service learning projects, as well as this SEL project that we started this year. And with that, Dr. Hillstrom's going to come up and talk to us a little bit about work he was involved in.
Good evening, friends. So I missed the memo. I thought I had 24 minutes, not two to four minutes, so I'll try to go quickly here and see what I can do. Again, this year, I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director for Freedom Schools, and I partnered with Michael Lehan, Principal at Osseo Senior High, as he was the innovator and thought mindset, really, that helped lead our work with Osseo Senior High. We did expand our work this year to include over 350 students, even after attrition. And you can see the sites where we had expanded to. Elm Creek is a brand-new site this year. Great work was done there as well. One of the really exciting things that under Michael's leadership, we were able to accomplish this year, you can see a total credit recovery of 151 credits. That surpassed my expectations, for sure, and really want to give a hats off to Michael and his crew over there, as well as all the folks involved in the Department of Educational Equity, who really did continue to move the work forward. If you have seen the data from years in the past, we average over 11 months of reading growth per child in six weeks. So it's a profound program, and I, again, thank you for your continued support for that. As we move forward, I'm going to talk about some of the staff learning that occurred. Our Equity Foundational Training, our EFT, as you know, you, as a board, had provided direction around. We trained over 200 people this year to be our trainers in-house, so we built a lot of capacity very, very quickly this summer. And one of the early areas that I had the opportunity to facilitate this in, and I know trainings are happening this week, so again, as Carrie suggested, when this was presented, I knew that we were training literally over 300 of our district's ESPs this year. And with the great support from Becky Hespin and the union in that partnership, we've had the opportunity to really impact quite a few people early on, even before school started. So that was wonderful. Other offerings that the Department of Educational Equity have been involved in, we continue with our work supporting three avid sites, had 40 individuals attend a summer institute week-long here in the Minneapolis area. Something that was new this year, in the past, as you know, we had provided equity training for our new teachers, and this year, our training had moved to the CLEAR model, a one-day training, had approximately 150 new teachers in, and I'm excited to see the results on that. It was a wonderful day of learning. I had the opportunity to facilitate and meet our new teachers, and I must say, I'm thrilled by our new teachers. Very, very excited about the energy and the passion that they're bringing forward, and anticipate this possibly one of our best years ever. As you know, you provided us some work direction and a priority result language around our multilingual and emerging multilingual in our EL population, and here's some of the professional development opportunities and the numbers that are directly connected to And as I mentioned, some of the priority result, priority work connections that you provided, you can see listed here. As we continue our work, we've continued our partnership, as you know, with the National Urban Alliance, and the CLEAR model has a foundational underpinning of that. And this summer, we provided an additional opportunity in our learning, a three-day institute that has historically and continued to be a strong collaboration between research and assessment, our friends in special ed and student services, and a deep, deep, powerful connection with our friends in CIES. The logistical team from CIES is arguably second to none. And they, with DOE and the other departments, put this effort together called Summer Institute, and I think there's some profound numbers that you hopefully will see relevance in and hopefully be willing to continue to support our efforts. So this is an interesting data point, belief that through positive relationships, rigorous learning experiences are created involving higher-order thinking and critical analysis to address real-world issues, in essence, the R of the CLEAR model. We asked that question prior to the training. 73% of the learners believed that this was true. After the training, we literally saw the number increase to 92%. Very, very strong, 18% increase. And last year was a similar number. The number started out lower last year at 70% and went to about 87%, but it's still about a 16% increase, just in that belief with people after three days. If we look at this next one, I believe is another powerful data point for us to consider, and this is connected to those who went through our first-year cohort. We have an NUAA1 and an NUAA2, so these first couple data points are connected to NUAA1. So to the extent that teachers felt prepared to utilize culturally responsive teaching strategies in a classroom with students, this question was asked. 46% of them prior felt that they were prepared or well-prepared. Following the training, 90%, 90% felt they were prepared or well-prepared to utilize these strategies. This is 43%. These are ridiculous numbers, powerful, powerful numbers. So I do know the work that we in collaboration are doing is making a difference for teachers. Last year's was almost identical, so again, numbers are very, very similar from year to year. As we think about the second year of the work we did, these are folks who would have taken Summer Institute the first time, so they would have been relatively grounded in this conversation, hopefully. This is the cohort that went through a second differentiated experience, if you will, that we called NUAA2. This is a question, believing training provided more knowledge about culturally responsive teaching practices, which will increase their capacity to ensure equitable student achievement. Before the training, 85% of the learners believed that they needed more knowledge. Following, 93.2% believed they actually got it. So it's a direct correlation to what they wanted and being able to see evidence, and these numbers were almost identical the year prior. This was more about skills, not just knowledge, but not just that valued information, but this really is about the ability to apply that valued information, if you will, the ability to actually use it. Believe that the training would provide more skills about culturally responsive practices, teaching practices, which would increase their capacity, again, to help us ensure equitable student achievement. Numbers were almost identical, 85% and 94.5% at the end of it. So again, the numbers were very reflected against the year prior knowledge, so it's exciting to see consistency in a trend that what we're doing is actually working and having a direct impact. Lastly, I believe this is my, oh, I have two more, I'm sorry. This is the, this one was about the ability to increase their investment regarding culturally responsive teaching, their own personal investment, which will increase their capacity, again, to ensure this. These numbers went from 85% to 97.8%, so a really strong connection with the human purpose of those who participated. And the last one was about capacity. And our capacity equation is built upon the idea that knowledge plus skill times will equals capacity. So that's why you saw questions about knowledge and skill and now, and that idea about their own personal investment. This is the last one I'll provide for you. Prior to the training, 58% of the participants believed that culturally responsive teaching practices were actually needed to increase capacity to ensure equitable student achievement. Following the training, 98.9%. These are profound numbers. 3%, 5% is tremendous. We're talking 40% in some of these categories. So the work is working. It's connecting with our teachers. It's meeting them where they're at, and I'm grateful for the support that you, as a school board, have continued to provide us. I'm going to... I'm going to invite Ms. Gonzalez to take my place, and thank you.
Hello. As part of our elementary math implementation, the Department of Curriculum Instruction and Educational Standards provided 26 sessions of training for Bridges in Mathematics during the first three weeks in August. We had 590 classroom special education, EL, and pre-K teachers attend this training, which focused on research-based instructional practices and strategies to improve learning and student achievement in mathematics. We also provided a special session for district and site administrators in order to help them prepare to better support teachers as they're implementing these, this new curriculum and also to oversee the implementation. Throughout this school year, we're going to continue with training and support for both our teachers and our administrators. And here are just a couple of pictures of teachers engaging in the learning. You can see that it's a very, was a very hands-on process. Andy Bado will talk next.
I'm here to talk about Chromebook training and the training that's gone along to support our updated digital learning for all plan that you learned about last week. So, to date, all nine through 12, over 409 through 12 high school teachers have registered and attended a Chromebook, a four-hour Chromebook training that is in exchange for an April afternoon of system professional development time. The focus again is in preparing teachers for day one so that they will feel prepared and confident to use their new device with their students in the classroom. So, really, the outcomes at this training, they received a Chromebook, they learned about the basic functions of the Chromebook. And then we really wanted to, as we talked about with the focus in the digital learning plan on strengthening teaching and learning practices, we wanted to provide an experience of blended learning that teachers could experience and then bring back to their own classroom. So, even tonight, our 15th session is running. We have about 20 teachers who are attending tonight after a full day where they spent in their building as well. And I'll turn it over to Jill.
Good evening. I get to talk to you about one of my favorite things, restorative practices. Let me just switch it over here. So, this will be our second year that we have trauma-informed practice and restorative practices embedded within our PBS priority work. So, I'm going to start with a couple of pictures. The picture on the left is a four-day foundational circle training that just took place at Woodland Elementary. There's about 30 staff there that attended. And then the picture on the right was really a unique opportunity because the International Restorative Practice Conference happened to be in St. Paul this year. And one of the authors and speakers we were able to get for Osseo staff only, a one-day training with Margaret Thorsborne. And she focused, focused on the intersection of restorative practices and bullying. And so, that was a really exciting training and a unique opportunity for our staff members to get to participate in. This summer, we had 12 trainings. We've had over 333 staff members licensed and non-licensed trained just this summer. And here are the 12 trainings. The first one is the four-day circle training. That's really the basic foundations of restorative practices. The two-day restorative chats is more teaching staff how to learn, how to use effective language with students. The one-day restorative practices in trauma really included the ACEs study. So, that was kind of neat, the overlay between the two practices. The one-day race in restorative practices was a one-day circle training that involved the discussion of race. But the really neat thing about that training was, I think it really was, it helped staff be able to see how can you teach content within a circle. Restorative practices in bullying, that was the Margaret Thorsborne training we had. And then the three-day restorative practice, practice, that's for staff that have already been trained in restorative practices where they get kind of hands-on coaching guidance from trained facilitators. Whoops, I'm going to go back. Hold on a minute. I just want to end with some comments from the August 13th circle training from staff that, what they left on their evaluations. So, one person said, one staff member said, "This is the best, most useful training I've ever attended." Another said, "Thank you for a powerful training." Another one said, "This is a transformational process." And then the last person that I'm going to quote, one of our teachers or ESPs, "This is such a wise investment in the lives of people who are coming together to share space with students for the year. Coming in with this gift of experience feels like such a valuable, important, life and climate-changing step forward." So, I think we'll end our presentation now and open it up to any questions. I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Jill.
Thanks, Jill, and to my colleagues, thank you for sharing. And, you know, we, I know that was a lot in a condensed amount of time. And that is only, that doesn't cover everything we did this summer, but we wanted to highlight a few things for you. And as Jill said, we are absolutely open to any questions that you have at this time.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, Brian. Last year, we were discussing the waiting lists with the Freedom Schools, and it looked like we had an increase in enrollment this year. Was there still waiting lists? Were we able to accommodate more students?
So, thank you for your question. We were able to accommodate another roughly 70 students this year by opening up a third site. We experimented, as you know, we don't provide transportation. And so, we are still working through where the largest needs are, where the largest interest is. Having a system or an offering on the west side of the district, i.e. Elm Creek, was a powerful one, but we still had a stronger concentration and more interest. If we would have had more capacity, say, at Crestview, I think we could have probably ran 120 kids there. So, it's, location matters and it's learning about what that feels like. But we definitely did expand our offering by roughly 70 students this year. And we'll continue to evaluate where students' needs are and adjust accordingly.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other questions? Rev, don't sit down yet. I have a, I have a related question for Rev and for Jill since we both talked about training and the impact that it had immediately following training and what people's thoughts were. But what about the stickiness of that training, the long-term impact of that training? Or do we have any plans to look at this at the end of the, end of the school year, the end of the try, six months, whatever, to say, how has it been implemented? Do they still feel that they have the tools necessary? So, I'm just wondering how we're going to look at it from long-term, the effectiveness of that training.
So, I can speak quickly to the NUA piece. Well, first of all, the Clear Model is the foundation of our culturally responsive pedagogy throughout the system. So, that is, that is being embedded by and through everybody, literally. So, I think that, that's a piece that will help us sustain and provide momentum, if you will, because the NUA training doesn't stand outside of that, it's built within that. So, I do think that's a sustainable attribute that will help us measure that and looking for that. It's showing up in our Equity Foundational Training. So, there's redundancy, if you will, to help support that through literally everybody in our system. Second of all, there's additional NUA work that will continue, more specifically aggressively at six sites where we're providing cohort opportunities for roughly 24 teachers to go through in two years at six of our elementary sites. So, that's more site-specific. And on a larger scale, the last component is all, there's roughly 50 people between CIES, special ed, and DOE who collaborate and come together in something what we're calling instructional mediators that have four trainings a year. There are ATTPS coaches, there are equity teachers, there are SEDCs, some of them. So, there's, there's an array of people that are being continued to be supported with this knowledge to be able to go into classrooms and work with teachers to ensure that the fidelity and capacity is being built. So, that would be my answer to the NUA, and I'll let you speak to yours.
For the restorative practices, I think we are still kind of in the exploratory phase of it and really trying to map out what a five-year plan will look like for this district. New this year, we're going to have two pilot sites. One's going to be at Crestview and one's going to be at Osseo Middle School. So, we're working with our collaborators to really figure out a way on how we're going to measure the impact of this. One thing we're going to do is create a survey this year and send it out to all participants that have been trained over the past four years to really see if they're implementing and what additional support they need. One other thing we are possibly considering is a small partnership with the U of M Research Department, who's also working with St. Paul, who's doing a lot of this work to see if they can help us really get a hold on implementation. We'll do that in partnership with our AA department as well. So, the pilot sites hopefully will really give us some good data on what the impact's going to be with the process this year.
That sort of brings up another question. We talked about the impact on the teachers and getting them trained and using it. But what about the measurable outcomes? What basis, what standards, baselines have we set that we're going to measure against going forward?
The two pilot sites, they are setting those baselines right now with the collaborator. So, it's going to be individual to Crestview and individual to Osseo Middle School. So, one thing I mean, I hope we're really going to start seeing is a difference in the engagement survey data that's really showing that there's going to be a shift in change in the climate for students, staff, and families with the use of restorative practices.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? No?
Chair, it's happy, maybe a bonus slide. I think it goes without saying that you're all aware of the great support that you've given for long-term facilities maintenance and the increase in construction that happens. And you're seeing a five-year trend of incredible growth in our summer opportunities, right? So, this is what we call a positive dilemma, right? So, I want to say kudos to Dale Carlstrom and Carrie Cave because they're the two people who make sure all these puzzle pieces fit together. And as Rev said, where we hold our programs matters, right? So, right now, we're excited that we have all this facilities improvements going on and that we have this incredible growth in summer programs. And it's just a dilemma, but we're excited to get to solve it. And again, thank you for the opportunity to share what happened this summer.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Brian, Rev, Robin, Andy, Jill, and Carrie. So, thank you all and thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, oh, yeah, go ahead because I got so excited about taking a check for $846,000 in my hand that I actually forgot to vote on accepting it. So, thank you for, and I did it again. So, I am going to make a motion to accept a gift to the district from the Osseo Maple Grove Hockey Association and Osseo Park Center and Osseo Senior High Parent Booster Groups in the amount of $846,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. And all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't think so? That motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much. And again, it's exciting to have that kind of check and that type of partnership with Omega and with other groups in the district. And thank the parents and those booster clubs for stepping up. So, thank you very much. All right, now, we can go back to the consent agenda, which typically is the less interesting agenda. But there are several items on here that people, you know, if you read it, there's some minor contracts, there's the joint powers agreement with, at Fernbrook Elementary for the new fields that are basically being built by the city Maple Grove, the official Osseo Ice Arena Cooperative Agreement that we just accepted the funding for. And there's a contract for snow removal, which means we're getting close to winter. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. And there's a bunch of other things on there. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Chair, or Director Henke, thank you for that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to approve the consent agenda, six to nothing. Thank you. We now have agenda item number 10, which are several action items, three of them which are larger contracts with our teachers and professionals and other staff. And one is a gift to the district. So, let's start out for the action item. And I don't know if we need to discuss any of this, Laurel or...
I have a memo to read if you'd like.
Okay, good. That wasn't on here, so I'm just going through.
I am Chair O'Stapi, School Board Members and Superintendent Reskraft. On the agenda this evening for School Board Action, our recommendations for approval for three employee group contracts comprised of administrative educational support professionals, hourly technical, which now includes our communications personnel, and Kid Stop staff. The contracts you'll be considering this evening include approximately 220 employees who serve in essential frontline and technical support positions throughout the district. All of these agreements expired on June 30th, 2018, and the new agreements contain language changes that reflect current district practices as well as additional provisions that serve to support our district mission and strategic priorities. School Board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions, dialogue about the new provisions, and to consider financial implications. The new contract provisions fall within the financial parameters set by the board for the 2018-2020 contract term. It's the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the employee contracts presented to you this evening.
Thank you. With that, we will start with the first one. And I am going to make a motion to recommend for approval the Agreement on the Terms and Conditions of Employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and the Administrative Educational Support Professionals, AESPs, July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, I'm going to do it again.
Douglas.
Director Douglas, thank you. I've only known you for several years, sorry.
I know.
It's been a long day. With the second, all in favor of supporting that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has passed, six, nothing. Number 10B, which is a, I will make a, well, it's a recommendation for approval, the Agreement on the Terms and Conditions of Employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and hourly technical employees, July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
So moved by Director Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six, nothing. Action item number 10C is a recommendation for approval of the Agreement on the Terms and Conditions of Employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and Kid Stop instructors from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Motion made by Director Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That has been approved, six, nothing. And on those contracts, I would like to thank Laurel Anderson for all the hard work in putting that together over the last many months, and I appreciate your work. And as you move, moving up into it, I know you're working very hard on bringing the rest of the team together. So, thank you on that. And this will probably be one of the last ones or that you worked on, was it not? All right, thank you. There's also 10D, which is also a fun one, which is gifts to the district totaling $53,673. Do I have a motion to accept that $53,673 in gifts to the district?
So moved.
So moved by Director Henke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion? I just wanted to point out about $35,000 of that, I believe, is from the Maple Grove Firefighters Foundation, which gave significant amounts of money across several schools and groups in the district. And I just wanted to point that out, that that's a significant gift from the Firefighters Association, and I just wanted to thank them publicly. So, all in favor, accepting all of the gifts, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So, six, nothing, we accept graciously those gifts to the district. So six-nothing, we accept graciously those gifts to the district. Very good. Next up are announcements. I believe I'm doing those. A School Board Negotiation Strategy Meeting will be held Tuesday, tonight, August 28, 2018, at 7:00 PM in Room N10 at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. A School Board Work Session Meeting will be held Tuesday, September 11, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Forum Room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A regular School Board Meeting will be held Tuesday, September 18, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Board Room at the ESC. This meeting is open to the public. A School Board Negotiation Strategy Meeting will be held Tuesday, September 18, 2018, at 7:00 PM in Room N10 at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. And a School Board Policy Committee Meeting will be held Tuesday, September 25, at 6:00 PM in the Forum Room at the ESC. This meeting is open to the public. Any other announcements or questions from any board members? At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This meeting is adjourned at 6:54 PM.